Sorry, all good.
How you doing Glenn?
Really good, how's everyone? I only threw down some ice melt that was due uh two weeks ago. Wonderful.
Dave, you got the flag, we're all set.
Six thirty-one.
We got everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody on it looks like looks like a few people are still trying to get on.
Yeah.
Ron, what are we waiting for?
Waiting for you, I can't see you.
I know, you don't need to see me.
Okay.
I'm ready when you are.
I'd like to call to order the Coventry Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. It is now six thirty-three. Uh determination of quorum, quorum, Mr. Ray is excused tonight. Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Burke?
Present.
Mr. Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
In attendance.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Here.
Vice Chair Clooneyan?
Here.
Chairman Flynn is here, we do have a quorum of eight. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you very much. Okay, before I start approval of minutes, we have three continuances tonight. The first one, if anybody's here for residence on Boyd Brook, it's continued to the February twenty-third meeting. We also have Hopkins Hollow Estates, if there's anybody for that, we're gonna be continuing that to a special meeting on February ninth. You have something to say, Rick?
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, before we announce that it's actually continued to February twenty-third, if that's not a definite date, I think we should just check with the solicitor, because I know you and I talked.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, that is a, that is a scheduled meeting, that's the scheduled February meeting. The only caveat will be um to what extent will be under executive order to uh have a hybrid or solely Zoom meeting. But I, the date is set, I believe. That is, that is one of the regular dates.
The, the issue, Mr. Pegasus, was that both Mr. Flynn and I have already determined that we're not gonna be able to have a meeting, or we won't be present at that meeting on the twenty-third.
But uh but Rick, the twenty-third, it, it could actually continue again, we're not sure, on the Boyd Brook.
Okay.
Because they won't be coming back until they have the septic and the, and the water design, so I don't know if that's gonna take a while. So at this point, I'm gonna continue it to the twenty-third. Uh Hopkins Hollow Estates is continued to a special meeting on February ninth. And Willow Lakes is also continued to the special meeting on February ninth, and I will announce this again when we get to those projects on the agenda. So first, uh we have approval of minutes, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes posted.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second?
Second by Mr. Kenny.
I have a second by Mr. Kenny, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Those minutes are approved. We also have site walk minutes for January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion on the site walk?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Kenny, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by Ms. Lukowitz. Uh any discussion, but we don't have any discussion on that, because that's continued. All right, so uh I'll do a roll call on that, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. And we have two ratifications. The first one is five point one Woodland Manor three, owner HK Woodman, the third LLC applicant, Haukeen Management, ratification of preliminary plan, comprehensive permit approval for ninety-two unit residential development consisting of ninety-two affordable units, Woodland Manor, AP twenty-seven lot one fifty, zone plan unit development with total property area approximately nineteen point two oh acres. And it's on Woodland Drive, can I have a motion for ratification?
Motion to approve the ratification.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Smith? I'm gonna do a roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye, Woodland Manor is ratified. Uh second ratification tonight is Coventry Landfill Solar, owner Tana Coventry, applicant Russ Mayman, watershed solar development, ratification of a master plan approval, creation of approximately six point eight megawatt direct current ground-mounted solar installation consisting of approximately ten thousand five hundred and eighty-two modules, AP seven lot thirty-seven, and AP fifteen lots ninety-six, ninety-seven point one, ninety-seven point two, zone BP, and that's on Honor Road. Do I have a motion for ratification?
Motion to approve the ratification.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Burke, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. The Lake Coventry land is ratified. Next on the agenda, we have a bond setting, six point one bond setting for approved phases, the Oaks at East Shore, applicant Ty Oakland Company LLC, owners Richard W. Boglin, ETA LS and Richard W. and Herman J. Boglin, CO, Colleen Carlson, AP twenty-three lots forty-seven and forty-seven point zero zero one, AP thirty-two lots one fifty-two, that's in an R twenty zone, addresses on Ty Oak Avenue. Uh we have anybody here for the uh representing the applicant?
Uh that's me.
Go ahead. So I guess we're gonna review the bond settings, what I have in front of me is phase one, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred, phase two, seven hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred, phase three, three hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred.
Yep.
Is everybody comfortable with that, those bond settings?
Chairman, Chairman, was there an updated memo that went out? That I missed?
Uh I, I believe the, I believe phase two was switched from six nine, six hundred and ninety-five thousand to seven hundred and twelve nine. It should be on your, it should be in your uh your packet for um this project.
All right.
Any other questions? Hearing none? So I'll make a motion to set the bonds, as stated.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to uh set the bonds for assesses plat twenty-three lots forty-seven and forty-seven point zero zero one, and assesses plat thirty-two lot one fifty-two. Uh three phases previously approved, the bonds be set as follows, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars for phase one, seven hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred dollars for phase two, three hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred dollars for phase three, for a grand bond total of one point six million forty thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Kenny, any discussion by the board or the applicant?
Uh no.
All right, hearing none, I'll take a roll call, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye.
All right, thank you.
The setting is set and approved.
Mr. Clooneyan, I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Um Patrick Dougherty has his hand raised. Um he represents one of the applicants that were continued?
Yes.
Um I don't know if you wanna hear him out, or?
I don't have a problem, but it is continued, though.
Yeah.
I know.
Chairman, if, if I may, I just wanted to ask if we were excused, I didn't wanna sign off.
Oh no, Patrick, you're excused.
Absolutely.
We'll see you on February ninth.
Very good, thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry for not uh saying you're excused.
No, that's, that's fine, I always, I wanna follow the orders, we'll see you then on February ninth, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have on the agenda, recommendations to zoning for special use permit. We have uh Horn and Cauldron Church of Earth. Owner applicant Gail A. McHugh, applicant is seeking a special use permit to utilize the property for church activities and dwelling for an ordained clergy, AP three oh two lot six, zone RR five, and the address is twenty-eight Greenhouse Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, Chairman, Julia Cretchen from Invenant orgy for the applicant.
Okay, would you just like to explain to the board um what you're trying to achieve there, I do understand that this has been up and running for about four years.
So this church has been um operating at this address since two thousand and fourteen, they received uh five oh one C three certification from the federal government, from the IRS. Um the owner and the applicant were unaware that a special use permit was required for this. They had applied for a town tax exemption, received a town tax exemption, and then in two thousand twenty-one, the assessor flagged it because the property doesn't have a special use permit, so they're looking to rectify that situation. Ultimately, this is an RR five zone, it has an established residence on it, has an established garage, it has access to utilities, um this isn't a massive operation, they're not looking to further develop the property. Um they have about twenty-four services a year, um so it's about every two weeks, it has to do with um the moon phases, they have a couple of solstice um organized events, and then they have a congregational meeting, which is their bigger meeting. Um overall, usually they have eight to ten people, approximately seven to eight cars at the um regular events. They have a driveway that fits approximately ten cars, so that's not an issue. Um their bigger event does bring in maybe twenty to twenty-five people, but as this is a nature-based religion, they uh are mostly interested in protecting the earth and having a spiritual connection to the earth, so a lot, they do a lot of carpooling, so as far as traffic, it's it's not a lot, they try to do what they can outside, they're small services, it's not something that's gonna impact the neighbors, and it's my understanding that the neighbors don't have a problem with what they're doing.
I, it did, it did state in your packet that there's been absolutely no complaints since this has been running, so.
And I, I believe one of the neighbors told the applicant, I'm not sure if he did write a letter, but he did state that he was interested in maybe writing a letter and sending it to the planner, because to voice support for the application.
Okay. Uh anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll uh entertain a motion for uh recommendation to zoning Board of Review.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Uh the project name is the Horn, Horn and Cauldron Church of the Earth. This is a recommendation to the zoning board. Uh the applicant, again Horn and Cauldron Church of the Earth, twenty-eight Greenhouse Road, AP three oh two lot six, zone RR five. Existing use is a single-family home, church, uh and the proposed use is the same. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to operate a place of worship in the RR five zone. The findings of fact and uh department analysis are as follows, uh the proposed facility will provide for safe ingress and egress, ingress and egress, I think that should read, of vehicles. The property has sufficient off-street parking for church services. There are adequate trash, storage, and delivery areas for the proposed use. The existing building is serviced by a private OWTS and private water. Existing utilities are adequate. Existing screening and buffering is sufficient. The applicant proposes no change to the exterior lighting and no new signs have been proposed. The proposed use is generally compatible with the surrounding residential zone. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This project should have no detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, welfare, or morals upon the issuance of a special use permit. Uh and I will end with, the church has already existed in the same location for some time, and the granting of a special use permit should not pose any negative impacts to the neighborhood. Uh therefore, I make a favorable recommendation to the zoning board for a special use permit, and I would like to include the planning director's report in my motion.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Burke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kenny, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooneyan?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Uh recommendation to zoning is approved.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, good luck. Okay, next on the roll business, I've already made the announcement uh that the public hearing is continued for residents at Boyd Brook to February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Okay, next we have a public informational meeting. Master plan, Paw Farm Road, continued from December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, owners Harold and Judy Seamus. Applicant Creative Spaces Rhode Island, proposed revised seven lot instead of eight, revised to seven lot major subdivision with no street creation and consisting of one existing dwelling and an accessory dwelling to remain. AP sixty-five lot sixty-seven RR two, twenty-four oh nine Flat River Road. Do anybody here for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin.
Hi, Mr. Cronin.
Ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant, uh Jason Klow from DePree Engineering is uh, joins me. Um as uh Mr. Chairman has noted, we have made some changes, reductions uh to the plan after our last uh meeting. Um we met with the planning department, as was suggested, um and considered the comments of the board uh and the neighbors, um so the changes um in a general sense are that we, we've moved the proposed public street, so there's no longer uh any street to be installed. Um we've dropped one lot from the rear uh or pond side, uh Hall's Pond side of the property. So that the total development now is seven lots, one existing house, and six street front lots on Paw Farm Road. Um each of the new lots, as there is no street creation, will have vehicle, pedestrian, and utility access uh directly to Paw Farm Road. And uh lot six, as it's configured on the plan, which uh Jason will walk you through in a moment, uh has been configured uh so that it is the owner of the three uh low-hazard dams on a Hall's Pond, which were brought to the attention um of the applicant at the last meeting, so that uh it will not be the responsibility of the town or of any homeowners association, but rather the owner of lot six. Um lot six is a sixty-acre parcel uh as it's configured. So as a result of these changes, we end, we end up with a conforming uh subdivision. Six new conforming lots for the RR two zone for a single-family residential development. Uh each has frontage of two hundred and twenty-five feet, area of two acres, and the necessary uh setbacks. If I could ask uh Mr. Crossman to have the uh changed plan uh put up on the screen, I'll have Mr. Klow from DePree to walk through the, the new site plan.
All right, give me a second, Mr. Cronin, I'll be right with you.
Thank you. He's gotta teach the dog what keys to press. I'm having a tough time here. Um.
Hey Ron?
Yes?
I am having a tough time, does Jason does Jason have a copy of the plan?
I do have a copy of the plan.
All right, um uh Cody, could you give Jason sharing capabilities, and he'll bring the plan up?
Yep, he's got it.
Thanks, Cody.
All right, so.
Beautiful.
Everyone can see this?
Yes.
All right, good, good evening, uh Jason Clough with DePree Engineering. Um as uh was you know, just presented to you by Attorney Cronin, um we've taken the comments from the last meeting and made some adjustments to the, the layout here. Um previously, we had uh these, basically these same lots that are along uh Paw Farm Road, we're, we're, you know, fronting along Paw Farm Road, there were two lots in the rear, they were serviced by a cul-de-sac. Uh generally, those in this area here. Um the two lots in the back were merged together and, and, and the lots are generally reconfigured to provide frontage on Paw Farm Road for the six new lots. Um with, with the one being reduced, so uh we have the uh lots here, they, they were, you know, previously um proposed, roughly two acres in size, right along Paw Farm Road, and there's a larger lot um which also has frontage along Paw Farm Road, the driveway around to the, to the area in the back, which is formerly, formerly two lots. And had been, you know, mentioned was that this, this larger lot in the rear was configured such that it would um encompass the three low-hazard dams, we have one off of Flat River Road, we have one, you know, back in this area, and then, and one, one over here, so wanted to incorporate them onto a single lot, in much of, in the same way that they're on a single lot uh today. Um and, you know, all the lots would still remain with, you know, proposed wells, both septic systems, uh just really eliminating the roadway and roadway infrastructure that would be required uh with the previous layout. I don't know, if there's any questions, I'd be uh happy to answer them.
Well, I have a comment, uh I would like to thank the applicant uh for, for listening to the neighbors and to the board, getting all the dams on the existing lot, um eliminating the cul-de-sac. Um I'd like to see that, and I know you didn't, you weren't asking for any relief for the last plan, so this wasn't really necessary for the applicant. I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure that he knows that, I appreciate when, when they listen to the to the neighbors and listen to the board and come back with something different. So I'll get off my soapbox, if there's anybody else um on the board that would have any questions for the applicant. If you can take that map down, I, I can't see anybody. I like lot six too, by the way. But anyway, uh anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Clooneyan, go ahead.
Um maybe just a suggestion, um some of those driveways are rather long anyway, but if it's any way to maybe um before you come back preliminary, assuming that we get that far, um I'd like to see the cars either with a hammerhead or some type of, so they're coming out into Paw Farm in a um you know, they're not backing out into the road, or at least minimize the amount of backing that occurs. And then um I know the only other comment that I think we heard a lot of was that Paw Farm Road was narrow through that area. And I don't know um if Public Works has weighed in, but I know in the past, we've had substandard roadways where we've got someone developing frontage lots, and um if you would be willing perhaps to uh i- if not widen, at least uh dedicate ample space if the town was to widen in the future, if you widen, you know, there could be an offset for impact fees, but if not, at least uh allow the space, so if the town needs to widen the road.
So we, we did discuss that, Mr. Clooney, and, and as I recall, uh I'm gonna follow up with the town engineer who made those comments as to his specific concerns and, and DPW, as you suggest, um and address that. Um and address that um at preliminary, if we get that far, as you like to say.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin, and as Mr. Colonian said, you know, we we have in the in the past with off-site construction. Uh, you know, dedicated some impact fees, so um that can all be taken into consideration. Uh anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna uh I'm gonna reopen uh the public hearing because this plan did change. I do wanna hear from the neighbors on this new project. Um so if I could get a motion to open up public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, I have a second by Mr. Smith. And all those in favor, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Luke Lutz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, public hearing is is now open. Cody, do you have anybody from the public would like to speak for or against this project?
It was one hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, could you bring him in? Him or her, please?
Mr. Schwartz, you're in the meeting?
Uh hi, David Schwartz, twenty forty nine Flat River Road.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is uh one of the last areas of filtration for Johnson's Pond. Johnson's Pond is under assault ecologically. And without the filtration that is provided by this piece of land. There there are, there's gonna be further degradation. On Johnson's Pond. There was a town council meeting uh earlier. This week where they were talking about dispersal of ARPA funds and the gentleman from Johnson's Pond. Wanted to make sure that there were ARPA ARPA funds. Put into stormwater mitigation. The loss of the natural function here will absolutely degrade the pond more. And I have a tree and landscape company. This climate change is a very real thing that's happening. The insect cycles are different, the disease cycles are different. And throwing this additional burden of the filtration. In the soil dis- uh disruption on this parcel is going to start something that can't be stopped. Also, there's uh, there's really no plan to save the trees. There is no plan not to disrupt the soil and it's the existing soil and the roots. Of these trees that are providing the filtration. That's essential to Johnson's Pond. There is no way to mitigate the damage to future generations that is going to be done by this soil disruption. And we're also uh working with the Audubon Society to do a wildlife study. On this property and there's there's no way to defend. The wildlife damage that would be done by loss of habitat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Appreciate your comments. Cody, do we have anybody else from the public would like to speak?
There's two more hands raised, tell her to bring the first one in now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snape, you're in the meeting?
Uh, Mr. Snape, you're muted.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, Mr. Snape, go ahead.
I'm a little slow, but I can't help it. Uh good evening to everybody here and and the board and also to the neighbors as well, too. I I missed the 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 presentation uh because I thought this was coming out later. And I apologize to that. Um what Dave said is true. Uh the he they re- redid the structure of the plan on poor farm road. Did they, did they do a survey? Uh I'm sorry to ask these questions a little late to the meeting. Did they do a survey on the property?
Can I uh can can I ask the engineer, can you uh answer that, please? You probably should have done a class one, correct?
Um, we're in the process of completing a a class one.
Okay.
Um, I know we've been out there uh doing fieldwork. But um I don't believe it's it's been finalized yet. I know part of. Uh what we were waiting to finalize on had to do with the administrative subdivision is being completed um for a portion of the property. Um it was just waiting on that to to be recorded so that it could be finalized.
Right, th- thank you, Jason. The 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 only concern that that I have is again, when I brought up.
Yes, hold on, Mr. Snap.
Yep.
Could you have um, uh there was never any name or address for this app, um the person?
I apologize. Uh could you put your name and address for the for the record? I'm, I apologize.
No, no problem. It's it's my fault for showing up here late. I apologize.
No, it's not your fault. It's my fault for not uh asking you for your name and address.
I don't want my name and address. Is Al Snape, S N A P E from three forty five Town Farm Road in Coventry? Three forty five Town Farm Road in Coventry. But m- my concern is is that my my lot line is half of that dam. And it goes along the water there, so so from what I understand from the last meeting. Uh is that what I heard was is that. The palm was gonna become an association. That's not gonna be the case this time. Is that one house on the end gonna have responsibility to the pond or how does that work? And again, I apologize for being late and asking these questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest if possible, we could put the plan back up.
Yeah, Mr. Cronin, if you want to address that, I think all the dams are are with the existing house, correct? All the dams and ponds?
They they are right now on, when the subdivision uh is approved by this board. The three dams will become part of lot six on the proposed plan. They will no longer go with the land or property of the existing home, Mr. and Mrs. Siemens. So they'll be uh excluded from that property and included in proposed lot six.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up, because I thought they were gonna stay with the existing house. Okay, so it's, it will be on lot six.
Okay, that's lot six, but I understand that, so. But the problem is I own part of that dam, so who's gonna be responsible for taking care of those dams? I mean, is the person in lot six gonna be now responsible for taking care of the dams and and the water and everything else?
Yes.
Yes, so do these people have experience, the person who's moving into that house in lot six, do they have experience doing this?
Well, I I don't know who that would be uh yet, Mr. Snape, but the uh the applicant. Who is looking to purchase this property understands uh the responsibilities that he's undertaken. And uh as Mr. Siemens uh no longer wishes to be responsible for these dams, uh the applicant is willing to accept. Responsibility for the dams and uh he will be the owner of lot six.
So my issue is here, a- a- and everybody on the board here knows I love Buck and Buck and I have been good friends for many years. And Buck and I have been, you know, cleaning out the dams and Chuck's been there many times when he worked for the town and what have you. So that means when the dams have to be repaired or cleaned out from the beaver action that goes on there. Somebody a- actually has to come on my property on land to work on those dams. The that dam that's between me and lot six, those are all my boards there that I put years ago there when Stella Hall lived there. And Buck and I have been great friends for for many years, so so I don't understand how he can be responsible for the dam. When I own half of that dam.
Well.
So, Mr. Cronin, if I could jump in, we 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 really don't know the delineation of the property yet because the survey hasn't been completed, correct?
Hasn't been finalized, that's correct.
Uh I was out there and I thanked Mr. Snappy for that. I was out there with.
Snape, by the way, you can call me that, but you.
Sorry, um I I was out there with Mr. Smith. I appreciate the access. Um those dams, uh you know, are not rocket science. They're cement made. They have uh metal inserts where there's a sleeve where. Where planks are put in to up to to raise and lower the water level. And uh as far as the, you know, as far as the maintenance of it, I believe the the state, it's it's a dams of record. Um I I'm not an engineer by any means, but those dams to me look very simplified.
Right, but but again, not to interrupt you, I've lived here for almost thirty years and the state's never been out here. I I myself, Buck and and some gentlemen from the town have, you know, taken care of those dams for many years. I again, you know, I don't know who's gonna be moving into the lot six or what have you. But but in order to work on those dams, they have to come on my land to do that. And I own half of that dam. I'm not trying to make this an issue, but but it it's. It what you're saying here, Mr. Cronin, and I appreciate what you're doing and what everybody's doing here to make things work for everybody. Well, but it 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 basically you're saying that all the dams become property of lot six. You know, and again, is that that person's not qualified to to taking care of the dams. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes behind it. I mean, it's horticulturally wise, you know, but but the ecosystem and everything else, so. There there is a big concern there as far as maintaining the pond. And that's a big issue w- with everybody, um you know, and I just wanted to make everybody on the board here. As well as Mr. Cronin aware of it, if he's not aware of it already, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Mr. Cor.
Just clarify it. Other than the fact it won't be uh, I I forget the gentleman's name, Buck, it won't be Buck anymore. It's just gonna be someone else. It's no different than if Buck sold all of his property today as one lot. Somebody else is coming in, they're responsible to maintain those dams. And we don't know who that person would be, you know, God forbid something happened that that's. If Buck sold his property or had to sell his property, whether it's Buck or somebody else, somebody has to maintain those dams. So it's really no different whether Buck has a subdivision and and sells the dams with lot six. Or if Buck sells the entire property and and somebody else purchases.
Don't.
Same quadrant.
No, I understand that a hundred percent.
Okay.
But 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 for some reason, God forbid, I don't like the neighbor behind me. He's not gonna step foot on my land. That's it. I mean, I I don't know who's gonna move back there. I have no problem, you know, cleaning out the dam. Buck and I have done it for many years, as well as Chuck and other people of the town or what have you. The state hasn't taken care of that. But for some reason, I don't like the neighbor, which I I like everybody for the most part. But, you know, he's not gonna step foot on my land, so you have to go on my land in order to maintain that dam. I just wanna make all you folks aware of that.
Well, you can access it from the existing house.
From what existing house?
From where Mr. Seamus lives now, you can you can access that dam.
Right, but that bridge that you walked over is a bridge that I built many years ago to have maintained that bridge.
Okay.
So I'm just making you aware of it. I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time, but I just something that I wanna make you aware. I mean, I own into the water. I own half of that dam. I haven't had the land surveyed in a long time. You did a survey, uh uh the engineering company was out here twice. Within the last week, I talked to the gentleman who was very, very nice, is surveyed the auto pot near. Poor Farm Road down to Town Farm Road and and put a marker on the um Town Farm Road, which I think you saw. Uh a week or so ago, so again, the water does, I do own some into the water. I don't own up to the 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 power lines, but I do own half that dam. If for some reason I don't like that neighbor, for instance, if I don't care for the neighbor. And I don't want that neighbor on my land, then it's gonna be a problem maintaining that dam. I mean, I'm just saying Buck has always, with his tractor, has always come over to my land. And cleaned it out with me, and then we sit down and cheers for an hour and a half and just look at the sky. I mean, I'm just making you aware of the situation that. Uh you know, I I I don't want it to to go crazy, but again, what Dave said is very important too. So I just wanna make the board aware of it and and everybody else aware of it as well.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Cody, anybody else?
Yes, I'm bringing Mr. Corcoran into the meeting right now.
Okay. Uh Corcoran, name and address for the record, please.
Uh yep, Sean Corcoran, one hundred Poor Farm Road, last name spelled C O R C O R A N. So um appreciate your time tonight. Um first, again, I I like you, Chairman Flynn, I appreciate the um work that the. Um company did to, you know, rearrange uh the lots after the public hearing, so appreciate the work there. Um I might be premature with this question because I believe there's still um environmental work to be done from an engineering perspective. Um I just still wanna reiterate about the wells that I had mentioned in the first meeting. On this is just, you know, can we have an impact study done on the wells? Just to ensure there's no degradation to the wells and, you know, of the existing homeowners. Um and and again, this might be a preliminary design, so again, might be premature question. I I noticed that um on lot two that it's across from my property and I happened to notice that. The well as it's laid out now, my leach field is actually my front yard and and comes out. To about where that well perimeter is. I I'm not a septic guy or septic or well professional by any stretch of the imagination. Um so I don't know if if that is part of the consideration, you know, as as you move forward and do your designs, so. I appreciate the the time to comment. Thanks.
I appreciate your comments. Uh Mr. Cronin, would you like to address those or Jason?
Sure, the these are just preliminary designs as Mr. Corcoran uh indicated.
Yes.
Um, you know, certainly if that hundred-foot well radius uh overlaps with the septic uh area, it'll be adjusted. You know, and the uh usual well testing procedures, uh production numbers, effect on aquifer. Will be considered, you know, as the design advances, right? And to septic design, well design, drainage design, um you know, these are. Uh more plans to make sure everything will fit to be.
Yes, and if if in fact you do get the preliminary plan, you'll have a a lot more. Information and there will be another public hearing at that point.
Yes.
Is is it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cody, anybody else?
No, there's not.
Okay, I'll ask it one more time. Anybody else like to speak for or against this project?
Mr. Corcoran has his hand raised again.
Okay, come on, come on back on.
See you.
Um hi, this is uh Mrs. Corcoran. This is Anne Corcoran, A N.
Name and address, please.
One hundred Poor Farm Road.
Thank you.
And um I'm just wondering um as far as what is the timeline? Um that these developments are going to start, start being developed on Poor Farm Road.
But we don't have an actual uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, no problem, Mr. Cronin, go ahead.
So there's no actual uh timeline yet, Mrs. Corcoran, and and that's mostly due. To the fact that we have to interact with other state agencies. Uh the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, the Town of Coventry, Central Coventry Fire, you know, just to list a few. Um so those, that permitting, should we advance beyond this stage? Uh we begin uh engineering design for drainage to be considered by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, just as an example. They provide feedback to our initial design, we make adjustments, and so there's no firm line timeline. In general, um generally speaking, uh a small subdivision such as this uh is permitted in approximately one year. So uh, you know, I I can't give you a specific answer, but that has been uh my experience. Um with this type of development. And I mean, any, the people on the board have similar uh experiences I do, and they might be able to give you uh their impression as well.
Uh okay, um thank you. Does anyone, can anyone else weigh in on that one-year timeline?
I I would just like to clarify, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Cronin.
The follow-up to that, Mr. Cronin, would be you have to come back here for preliminary plan approval and explain the status that you've obtained all these permits, show any changes, and there's another public hearing.
Correct.
And then after that, there is still some finer details that need to be addressed on the plans. It goes to final approval, which can come before the border administratively, and then and only then, once everything has been recorded in the town hall, the sale goes through, will it develop a stop pulling building permits?
That's uh procedurally correct, Mr. Cronin.
So does that go beyond the year typically?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, it for a small subdivision, it it it's about, it's about one year.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're gonna have some questions here from D E M and the Town of Coventry uh with regard to this pond and uh how it's affected. So, you know, I I don't, I don't expect it to be uh, there to be no feedback. Let's put it that way.
And 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 for Mr. and Mrs. Corcoran's benefit, I just wanna assure you, when they get to the, there is still another checklist of items that need to be provided with more detailed plans, and there will be another public hearing.
Did that answer your question?
Um, it it did. Thank you very much. And uh one final question. Uh, assuming all permits are in hand and everything has cleared, um, what is it? How soon right after that do you start building once you you have all what you need in hand to start to begin the the um building process?
Uh, as soon as possible. There's quite a bit of time and expense that goes into permitting these projects. Uh, they're continually lose money uh until the first house is built. So uh that action is usually taken promptly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cronin. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Cody, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Snape has his hand raised again.
Yeah, bring him back in. Go ahead, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Al Snape.
We lost you.
Sorry, that was my fault. I I removed him from the meeting by accident. Go ahead, Mr. Snape. My apologies.
I won't hold it against you. Um, ju-ju-just to let you know that
Name and address, please.
Uh, Al Snape, three forty-five Tom Farm Road, Coventry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, a couple of people are having trouble getting to the Zoom meeting. They they were trying to listen or what have you. Just wanna make you aware that Tom and Rachel from Tom Farm Road uh were trying to get into the meeting and also Stephanie and Travis. I know you asked, is anybody else here? But they've had trouble. I had trouble signing on tonight too, and I finally figured it out. That's why I was muted or whatever. Just wanna make everybody aware of that. So there are other people who who are listening, but can't attend the meeting or they're having trouble. Just wanna make you aware of that. Thank you.
Uh, they also can call on their phone too, I believe, right, Cody?
Yes, that's correct.
So if you, you can call on your phone and and be uh just just audio and no video if if they wanna try that.
Okay, all right. If they are listening, I'm sure they'll call. And again, if they can figure that out, I remember seeing that in the email. Thank you. I I appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cody, anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Only, I'm bringing him into the meeting now.
Can you hear us, Mr. Only? You are mute? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Gary Only, one seventy Poor Farm Road. Um, little unclear on the new design, other than the removal of the street cul-de-sac. Um, lot six. Down the end of the street towards one seventeen, according to the map, is lot six. Uh, is that joining with lot three and four? So three and four become six? Is that how that's working?
Oh, lot six is way in the back of the plan.
All right, lot.
You see lot six with a long driveway.
Mr. Chairman, I asked before, can we put the plan up?
Yeah, I've got lot six heading down the end of my street towards one seventeen. Um, so yet I'm a little unclear what's actually going on here with this picture I have.
Mr. Chairman, i-if I might, uh, Gary, Tom Cronin.
Hey, Tom.
The uh, on the first plan we submitted, uh lots three and four were uh to the rear of the cul-de-sac against Hall's Pond, correct?
Right, exactly. I see that.
Yep. I thought that's what you were referring to, because those are in fact uh now become part of lot six. As you suggest, and it also goes to the street on Poor Farm Road.
Right, up towards the end, because there's still another lot seven at the very end.
Lot seven on the new plan is the existing Seaman's home.
So I'm showing lot seven as the last one with access off of Poor Farm Road. Now Buck's
Looking at the other plan, Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, you'll, Gary, you're looking at uh the plan we submitted uh last month.
Right, got, yep.
Jason, could you, uh, Mr. Chairman, could I ask Jason?
Absolutely. Why don't you put the map up?
Gary, are you on the phone or can you see the map?
No, I can see.
Okay, Jason, could you put that up?
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
It's small, but I can I can somewhat see it.
All right, so from your, from your house directly across the street is, that's lot six, all the way up to Town Farm Road and all the way back to what was formerly lots three and four on the initial plan.
All right, so I'm actually, Tom, I am directly across the street for, from what was lot one. I'm up towards Town Farm Road, that end.
I I see your lot, yes.
Right there, yeah. So across the street from me is the pond directly down the little hill across the street. So this new picture I'm seeing, lot one is not anymore across the street from me. That's become part of lot six is what I'm seeing.
Correct.
So lot six has this big tail going across, directly across from me.
Correct.
All right, so now what I'm concerned with is where is the driveway going to access lot six?
Jason, can you put up the next sheet? Okay, so Gary, this uh this shows that driveway uh back to uh the back of lot six.
So the driveway is across, directly across from my neighbor's house by the looks of it.
Uh, let me see.
Which would be it almost not directly across from my driveway, but not too far away now at this point with this new plan.
Looks like it's almost at the property line between two lots.
Yeah, I can't tell which uh
It looks like it's in between the two lots.
You see where, you see where my lot is, right?
Yes.
All right, so the the house with the in-ground pool, that's Mike uh um, Mike
Bukachi.
That's Bukachi's house right there. So that driveway accessing lot six is gonna be just about directly across the street from his driveway.
Oh, it's on the property line.
It's on the property line between his house and it looks like the Abraham's house.
So it's not directly across.
Right, so it's kinda in the middle.
Yes.
So, all right, I was wondering where that driveway was gonna be, because that that concerned me a little bit. So now lot six is gonna own what was gonna be lot one uh with the first plan.
That's right.
So, all right, I understand that now. So this is what we're proposing. Well, I will say one thing about putting that driveway right there. Um, really wanna consider doing something else with that, because that corner right there is a real, real bad spot. Um, you know, I'm sure that's probably gonna concern everybody involved here. The road is, the road is dangerous, like a lot of people mentioned in the last meeting. Uh, a lot of cutting through here, a lot of speeding. That that driveway right there is gonna be, that's gonna be bad news right there. No doubt about it.
If I could jump in, Mr. uh, Mr. Cronin. Uh, as Mr. Kalunian suggested, we will be asking the the applicant to put hammerhead driveways in. So the the people that own the new lots will be accessing Poor Farm Road uh forward and not backing into Poor Farm Road.
Oh, yeah, you'd never wanna back into Poor Farm Road. And it would be bad enough just pulling out of that driveway, because that's a really bad blind turn right there.
And
It's a terrible, terrible location for a driveway right there.
And we've also asked and the developers agreed to meet with Public Works and the town engineer to look at either dedicating uh land along the front for um future uh enhancement, and we'll be looking at things like site distance and clearing, and all that will be addressed at the next stage.
Yeah. Hmm. All right, that was, that was pretty much my question where that uh where that driveway was gonna end up.
Mr. Flynn, would you like uh Jason to take down the map?
Yeah, I think uh, are you all set with the map?
Uh, yeah, I can get a, I can probably get a copy of this at town hall again, right, Tom?
Absolutely, in the planning department.
Oh, yeah, same what, same place I picked up these that I have now.
Yes.
Correct.
All right, so so this is the latest proposed thing, and of course, it can change.
Obviously, anything can change at preliminary.
Right, yep. All right, that was my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that question.
Thank you.
Um, I'll take down the screen share if
Yes, please. Cody, anybody else?
Yes, there's two more requests. I'm bringing the first one in now.
Looks like Arthur A. Can you hear me?
Arthur, you're muted.
Arthur, I believe you're muted. Cody, can we go back to him and bring the the other person in?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Al Snape again, three forty-five Town Farm Road. Uh, lot, number six, is that, do I see that right? That has sixty-some-odd acres with lot number six, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's a long driveway. My only concern, and and you might not be able to answer the at at this time, is that a driveway or is that a road?
That's a driveway.
Okay, so the the no, a road can't go off that driveway at any future point?
I would believe not, not.
You would believe not. So so you're saying here, lot number six with sixty acres, which is, what you said, we'll take care of the dams, we'll talk about that later. But that driveway will probably, will probably not become a street. So that driveway is a driveway, right?
It's a driveway and not a street.
Okay, I hope they, I hope they get a snowb, a snowplow. All right. Well, thank you very much. Enjoy the snow this weekend, guys. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, Cody, can we try to bring that other one, another person in? Arthur, can you hear me?
He's still muted, Chairman Flynn. He has to unmute himself.
Arthur, if you're new to Zoom, in the bottom left, there'll be a microphone icon. If you click on that, it'll unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Corcoran has his hand raised again. Do you want me to bring him in and try Arthur again later?
Uh, is there any new people that haven't spoke yet that wanna come in? If not, sure, bring Mr. Corcoran back in.
Uh, thank you, counsel, Sean Corcoran, one hundred Poor Farm Road. Actually, uh, my neighbor Arthur called me. He's having challenges with the unmute or, you know, connecting there with. So just um wanted to convey um his concern, same as um Gary's uh related to the the houses, um driveways, hold on, let me get my map back out. Um, lots one, uh six and one um on that corner. Uh, the the, you know, um, that road there is a pretty, pretty tight
Basically, can you put that map back up, please? Did you put that map back up?
It's it's the same concern that Gary mentioned earlier, just reiterated um on the uh tightness of that corner and the um safety concerns around the uh driveways exiting out at that area. So
And if, if in fact uh this gets approved on master plan, uh the site distance will be addressed uh on the next phase of this project.
Yep, I appreciate it. So I just wanna make sure that uh the Abraham's voice uh was was able to be heard.
And I need you coming in for him.
Mr. Chairman, could could uh, Mr. Co, who is Mr. Corcoran uh calling on behalf of?
Um, Art, yes, Arthur and Jan Abraham.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, one twenty-four Poor Farm Road.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, if you could take that map back down, please, Jason? Thank you. Cody, anybody else?
No one else.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. Anybody else like to speak for or against this project? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Kenny makes a motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mattson has a second. Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Aye.
Mr. Flynn says also aye. So public hearing is now closed. Um, anybody on the board, uh after discussing anything uh with the neighbors, have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question, Chairman Flynn. I just wanna make an administrative note. Um, it was Mr. Mattson that made the motion. I was the second.
Okay. It's hard with the Zoom, but Mr. Mattson made the motion. Mr. Kenny seconded. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have uh one, one comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Burke.
One, one comment followed by one question from Mr. Cronin. I'll start with the question first, because I think it's pretty easy. Um, with the, with the old, the initial plan with the cul-de-sac, we had discussed the utilities. Is the intent still to to have underground utilities?
Uh, no, without uh the construction of a public street, uh the utilities would be connected above ground.
Okay, so there, um, I'm assuming lot six will have, you're gonna have to have some poles.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I know National Grid gives you two poles, but I don't think that, that's two hundred feet, I believe. It's a hundred feet per pole, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. And then just the only comment that I had um to kind of put the 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 neighbors at ease, Mr. Only and and the Abrahams, their concern about lot six and the driveway um coming out on that corner there. This is all, you know, a very rough draft and and nothing is set in stone. And it probably, you know, will change. And I think just by looking at it, um, the driveway where it meets the street at the very end, that looks like it, it really drops off down to the pond. So the the driveway might not even be able to to fit in um over there, given the terrain and what it looks like. It might just be a steep grade. So it, those things will change. The driveway will will probably move. Um, and like the chairman had said, um, site distances, that will all be taken into into account um going forward. And that's all, that's all I had.
Thank you for your question and comment, Mr. Burke. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Flynn.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I have uh just a question.
I have uh just a question for Mister Cronin, just of clarification if I could?
Go ahead.
Mister Cronin, just clarification, so people understand that lot number six being sixty acres. Um the majority of that sixty acres is the ponds, correct?
A good uh substantial portion uh of that property is the pond.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you. That's it, Mister Flynn.
I still like that lot.
Oh, me too, it's a beautiful lot, sure is, it just, people were talking about the size of it and the sixty acres.
All the water, right?
The majority of it is water, if you follow the lot lines.
Yes. Thank you, Mister.
Yes.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Chair has a cou- couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mister Anderson.
Off of Mister Cronin, so it, or, or you, Mister Chair, this, in the class one survey, that's not needed at this point, that's need, that's gonna be completed for prelim?
It will be, it will be completely by the preliminary plan.
Okay.
Mister Cronin?
Sorry, slow to the unmute button there.
That's okay.
Yeah, be- because um, because we changed the property lines at the request of the planning department in this board. Uh the class one survey is not completed. Um some, you know, sometimes we do have it, but it, uh because of the adjustments we made in that short amount of time. Um we're not prepared to submit it yet.
But you feel it will be submitted before preliminary plan?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks, thanks for that, second question, uh you know, and cue the eye roll here, but we can deal with this later on. But Mister Snape, Mister Snape clearly believes he owns half that, that dam. And I still think it's limbo, whether we deal with it now or deal with it at prelim, or we just gonna, there's lot six own that dam? Or is that essentially split between the two uh, the two owners?
Uh I, I don't, I don't know the answer, Mister Anderson, um. If the lot, you know, if the line crosses the dam at any point, they would have shared responsibilities in the rise, in the eyes of Rhode Island Department. Of Environmental Management, which is, you know, the, the only entity that anyone cares about here, um. So, if Mister Snape thinks he owns half, I, I believe whoever the owner of lot six is uh. Eventually would be overjoyed to hear that, um you know, shared responsibility for something like that is, is welcome. Um we just wanted to ensure, um due to the concerns of this board. Um that the uh responsibility for the dam in terms of this subdivision were crystal clear. Uh were, and, and that's what we tried to accomplish, so wha- whatever the responsibilities are. Uh in regard to this subdivision and those dams, they're gonna be placed with the ownership of lot six.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, now entertain a motion.
Uh Mister Chair, before the motion is made, I mean, I got the, I didn't have, I don't know, was there a new planning director's report for this? Cause I got the uh one from last month. I didn't, I will search through my packet, I didn't have a new one.
It was not a new direct. There was not a new director's report of.
Okay.
Given to the packet.
Yeah, okay.
You'll have to do a little of. So it's seven lots instead of eight.
Yeah, no, no, it's a little dancing going on, well, whoever does it, I know, some people do this stuff, but they're still asking for those uh. Those waivers at this point, I just wanted to clarify that. Um regulation waivers and the other waivers, they're still asking for all that, right? At this point, same director's report.
Is that a yes, Mister Cronin, still asking for those waivers?
Uh.
Some of those are not applicable, right?
Right, some of those waivers had to do with uh the public street. Um.
Yeah.
So uh those would not be applicable, but the uh, the others uh are applicable. Uh with regard to sidewalks and things like that.
Does anybody, does everybody understand the waivers or should we review those before we make a motion?
Mister Chairman, I also have, I have one more um question before our motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mister Burke.
Uh this is for Mister Cronin, I don't remember if it came up uh at the previous hearing, um. Will you be, uh this is per the, the town engineer's request. Will you be submitting an emergency action plan in regards to the dams? Prior to, to uh a soil and erosion control permit?
We, um when we uh researched the dams after the last uh meeting, Mister Burke. We found that they were uh low hazard dams, uh not regulated actively. Uh by the Rhode Island Department of Environment and Environmental Management. Um so we will be working with the town engineer um on issues with regard to the drainage. Uh in, in the, the impact of that drainage uh on the pond. Uh from, from that perspective, from the dam perspective, of course Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. Is gonna uh have the final say on the drainage uh for the prod- project. But for the dams, uh the DEM is not, not currently regulating those dams.
Okay, thank you.
So Mister Anderson, um I have, I have my list of uh requested waivers. And uh I'd be happy to go through them uh with the board.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it, I just, I just think the um, I think it's pretty, uh I think the regulation waivers of the subdivision are pretty much all gone. Um but, go ahead and review them.
Thanks Mister Cronin.
Sure, so the first one was uh number forty-eight on the checklist. Proposed location and total number of catch basins and manholes. It'll no longer be required. Uh fifty, proposed location and total length by sizable drain pipes. Similarly, no longer required, uh as is no public street. Number fifty-one will still be requested, proposed location number, I'm sorry, will no longer be requested. Proposed location number and species of, of street trees, so forty-eight, fifty and fifty-one. Where we, with regard to the public street. Uh fifty-nine is with, in, in relation to uh your question about the class one survey. Uh seventy-four is about uh wetlands from Department of Environmental Management. We would continue to ask for both those, fifty-nine, seventy-four. Uh as well as the suitability determination in seventy-nine. Um then uh going to eighty-two. The uh soils testing for the uh wells and septics. If that waiver is requested until preliminary and the landscape architect plan. One oh six and one oh seven, the approved soil erosion and settlement control plan with the town. Um that is requested, so fifty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-nine, eighty-two, one oh six and one oh seven. Uh continue to be requested waivers. Jason, did I do okay on that?
Yes, and if I can add to that, uh the planning staff does support granting those waivers.
Good question, Mister Anderson, I, I apologize for overlooking.
Very good, Mister Anderson, I appreciate that. Okay, I'll uh, I'll entertain a motion if, if anybody wants to give one, please.
Well, seeing how I stirred it up, I'll, I'll attempt a motion at this, Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Mister Anderson, appreciate it.
Hey, no, no problem, motion to approve this master plan subdivision, uh submission, sorry, um subdivision for uh. Poor Farm Road, uh seven, a lot, major subdivision with street, uh street creation. Um the owners are Harold and Judy Siemens, applicant is Creative Spaces. Address is two four oh nine Flat River Road, uh AP sixty-five, lot sixty-seven, zone RR two. Uh the lot size is a hundred and nine point four acres, the existing use, as we know, is a single family. Um the proposed use is seven uh family house lots. Uh he wants to propose and construct eight uh residential subdivisions, uh street, uh street houses. And uh. We all heard the changes that we heard today. And we thank them for working with the people. Um I want to uh approve these waivers in my motion that he asked for, for the uh major, for the major land development checklist. Um as they're really not available, don't apply it to the project at this time. Um for the master plan, uh to the master plan sub-middle stage, after the last minutes, sub-middle stage, so uh. I'm just gonna go over the numbers as we already read them, it's number fifty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-nine, eighty-two, one oh six. And one oh seven, we approved uh those waivers. Um just added to this motion was, and I think we went over this, was Mister uh Hagaman's letter dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Um he had his comments, and uh I just, I think some of them have been satisfied, um and I just want to, the letter to can, uh. To still be taken into consideration in the next phase, that was uh Mister Hagaman's letter to uh the planning director. November seventeenth, uh twenty twenty-one. Consideration of finding good facts is uh consistency with the comprehensive plan. Uh yep, the comprehensive plan notes that areas in the RR two zone are categorized as low density residential development. Larger states agriculture and certain low intensity non-residential activities incidental to the rural environment. So the proposed seven lot uh development is generally consistent with this comprehensive plan. Uh significant negative impacts uh environmental, so the proposal will not likely have significant environmental impacts. The subdivision will be reviewed by the town engineer and RID EM to ensure. That the project conforms to both the local and state regulations with respect to stormwater management, onsite wastewater treatment systems. The quality of the stormwater leaving the site and the implementation of the best management practices. Uh the zoning standards, uh the subject property is zoned RR two and the proposed plans meets these dimensional requirements as required by the Coventry zoning ordinance. Uh traffic impacts, although traffic impacts uh were not addressed in great length in this application. Uh the proposed number of lots uh do not indicate significant impacts to the traffic. Uh and I would just like to incorporate. The uh planning director's report in my motion, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mister Anderson, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Miss Lukewitz, any discussion? Go ahead, Mister Clooney.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I, 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 I could appreciate Mister Anderson um working off the uh. The last planning director's report, I didn't even have that today in front of me because I discarded it, so I appreciated making the motion, I just want to clarify. When you were reading, um there are seven lots to accommodate seven homes and there is no street creation. I just want to clarify, that was your intent in the motion?
Yes, sir, that was my intent in the motion.
You'd like to amend that, Mister Anderson?
Uh sure, if I didn't make it uh uh obvious, I'd uh amend my motion to uh. Ensure that these are seven uh street lots with no street creation.
Okay, and second amended?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, alright, the amendment's been seconded, any other discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll make a roll call, Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Burke?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Mister Anderson?
Aye.
Mister Mattson?
Aye.
Mister Lukewitz?
Aye.
Mister Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye, the master plan has been approved.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you, Mister Cronin.
Thanks for working with everyone's uh comments too, much appreciated.
Okay, uh next, um usually at a pre-application, we do have a site walk. But we do not have a site walk on this next project because of the Zoom restrictions. If anybody wants to go over and look at that on their own, uh if, I'm sure they, everybody knows where this project is. So uh in nine point one, we have a P application plan for twenty-three oh five New London Turnpike. Commercial development owner Coventry Realty LLC, CEO Alan H. Uh sixth Taddy, I'm sure I pronounced it wrong, I apologize, appen saying proposed of. Development of a new three unit commercial building with a drive-through. Uh window for one restaurant in a coffeehouse unit. AP seven lot fifteen zone industrial one. Twenty-three oh five New London Turnpike, so anybody here representing the applicant?
Oh, I, I don't like it when I go back to back, Mister Chairman, but I, I am here. For the owner and applicant Coventry Realty.
Hey, Mister Cronin.
Uh Nick is here as well from Coventry Realty and Sam Hemingway, the engineer. So uh pre-application here is a, this is a, uh the first step in a. A little bit of a, a path here, uh to get where we want to go. Um this is a property that's zoned industrial and to accomplish what we need to accomplish, we're gonna need to uh change the zone. So uh we'll go through pre-application with this board today. Uh we'll approach the uh town council to be placed on their agenda. Uh the, the town council will send us back to the planning board uh for a master plan for this. Um and a recommendation to town council. Uh conditional on the town council approval of the change of zone to general business. Uh we'll have to make a short stop over at zoning because we want to reduce the number of parking spots. And then uh finally, we'll be back before this board uh for preliminary on uh development plan review. All, all of that for one lot. So uh but, you know, but let's get going, right? So what we have, what we have here is a point eight acre, thirty-four thousand square feet. Uh everybody in, in the town drives by it once a week or so, uh the former Chevalier's Auto. Uh it's currently used uh in the collection and transfer of recycled. Clothing, which is a, a nice way of saying that, I appreciate that. Um the proposed use is a single structure of about fifty-eight hundred square feet. With three retail rental units facing New London Turnpike. Uh there's a similar uh building across the street, which has something called the Tropical Smoothie Cafe in it, which is interesting, but uh. Anyway, that, that type of development is not allowed in an industrial zone. So that's, that's the issue right now. So we, we would knock down the uh current building uh and have it become a, a vacant lot. Uh the, the lot boundaries are uh conforming to the public streets you see. So it's New London Turnpike uh to the southeast, Salvis to the southwest. Gay Street to the northwest and uh bounds the Dunkin' Donuts property to the northeast. Uh there is a cemetery that uh we had dealt with uh when we were um constructing the Dunkin' Donuts. Uh the board may recall that uh we reserved uh two parking spaces in the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. So that people might visit uh the cemetery. Should it move them, uh so that, this, this property also bounds that cemetery. And uh we'll have to deal with that as we move along. The entrances are proposed for New London Turnpike and Salvis Street. Um I'm gonna let uh Sam Hemingway take over and uh discuss his site design. Uh with the board and then we'll take uh any feedback um from the pre-application uh process.
Mister Flynn, can I ask a question of Mister Cronin, please?
Absolutely, miss.
Tom, you made a mention that um you were gonna uh change the zone to uh general business. Whereas all the other parcels over there, we had them changed to uh Business Park.
Well, it's a word.
Pontificate on that?
Well, I don't know where, it, it, so like, just like local knowledge here, we're between Wendy's and Dunkin' Donuts. So Wendy's is in the Business Park and the Dunkin' Donuts is not in the Business. So Wendy's is in the Business Park and the Dunkin' Donuts is not in the Business Park, so.
But they're both zoned BP.
Yeah, we're immediately adjacent to the Business Park, so there is, uh, language in our zoning ordinance which would allow you to expand the zone, right? If you're adjacent to the zone and it's not in conflict with any other zoning, you can expand the zone. So maybe the, it could be, Mr. Crossman, that BP is a more attractive alternative.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Hemingway. Why don't you, uh, describe the, the site, uh, to the board?
Uh, uh, should I, uh, share my screen? Is that something that's?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Mr. Hemingway.
That work?
Yes.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
First and foremost, uh, Sam Hemingway with the Garret Follin Associates, uh, doing business in Providence. Uh, you, you know, uh, Mr. Cronin, uh, described the project, I think, very well. Uh, notionally, the project has frontage on three streets. Uh, we're proposing to maintain access from two of those. Uh, we're going to reduce the width of existing entrances pretty considerably. Uh, our intent, or at least, uh, where we see the project going, we expect New London exit to be a right only that's consistent with the other, uh, development that's been on that street, and we, we fully expect DOT to want to see that on this project as well. Uh, but we do have an existing entrance on Salvis Avenue to the southwest, uh, which will be maintained and, and reconfigured, uh, somewhat to, to align with the new travel way. Uh, although you can't see it very well, I, at least I can't with the distance to my screen. Uh, the existing building sits in about the middle of the lot. Uh, the intent is to move the, the structure towards the back of the lot to maintain as much front field parking as possible, and also to provide stacking vehicles, uh, um, as, as many stacking vehicles as we can, uh, to maintain, uh, clear operation, uh, for, for all the act, the various activities. Uh, the stacking, as it's proposed, is considerably in excess of the, the minimum requirements of DOT, as well as the, the, the outlines within your, the town's ordinance. Uh, there are a couple of, uh, waivers that we foresee, or at least issues that we think have the potential to come up. Uh, this is actually an enlargement of the site plan right here. So, uh, we had, in fact, initially, our first pass was, uh, did speak to the, the issue of, uh, the BP zone as opposed to general business, uh, mainly for consistency with the budding properties. Uh, uh, the, the uses are consistent in, in, in any case with the surrounding area and the comprehensive plan. Uh, the drive-through does require a special permit. Uh, the parking field is roughly fifty percent of what is required by zoning. Uh, uh, because we don't have a lot of information on tenancy, it's a little difficult to narrow down on where that is. Uh, but we are envisioning, uh, with three separate tenants, low, uh, vehicle uses on the, on the smaller tenants, and the, the primary, the busiest use being that the, the restaurant with drive-through, uh, by nature, that it obviously requires a, a pretty significant, uh, stacking of, of opportunity for vehicles to be on the property through the drive-through stack, so, uh, the, the parking that we propose, we, we think is consistent with the industry and with the, frankly, with the requirements of this, this, of the uses as they're proposed. Uh, the, the loading is also somewhat of an issue. It's, uh, we, we think falls in the gray area. Uh, are, we're anticipating or envisioning loading within the front field parking, so smaller trucks in the front field off hours. Um, I, I know that, I don't know, but I'm told, uh, we had a, a pre-submission meeting back in November with staff and uh, they specifically mentioned the, the loading and circulation that was proposed on, on, uh, the abutting property on the Dunkin' Donuts and, and, uh, I think we're, we're open to, 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 uh, listening and, and incorporating any concerns that, that the board might have on that issue. And then the last, um, uh, issue that we foresee is just solely based on the lot size. Uh, some of the buffering, uh, we would like to get some reductions to the minimum perimeter of buffering. Uh, there is virtually no buffering in the front, um, now where that, where the, because of the, the existing and historic uses on the site around the back, we'd like to reduce those. Uh, there are gray differentials where we think the, the walls and the, and the orientation of the site and the relocation of the building are, are frankly going to make the, the, the screening a much less important, um, element of the, of the development. So we'll maintain land, large landscape areas in the front field, uh, where it, where it primarily be seen, but in the back, the building's so tucked in the, in the rear, uh, we don't expect to get, uh, a, a major landscape along those perimeters. So, uh, hopefully, that's kind of the, the ten thousand foot as at a pre-app level. I'm, I'm happy to talk about specific engineering issues if you'd like. Obviously, we haven't got too far into this, but would love to hear from the board.
Miss Ron? Jenny, we don't see him, but he disappeared.
I cannot. He disappeared. It's a coup, Rick. Rick, you've been promoted.
Okay, if he comes back on, that's fine, just for the time, for the interim. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments concerning this application? Plan, anything?
I have a question. The, um, coffeehouse with drive-through, I assume that's gonna be sort of like a sit-down restaurant as well. Do we have any idea what the capacity is gonna be? Because that'll make a drastic, um, difference in parking.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we can certainly narrow it down a little bit as I, I, you know, and, and the owner is here, he might be able to speak to, uh, if he's gotten any farther with specific tenants. Uh, they generally speaking, there certainly is seating in most of the, the, the operations that we've seen and deal with. But, uh, uh, agreed, that's why we had a little trouble nailing down the parking requirement relief that's required. Uh, we expect a small patio area out front. That seems to be common now. Give or take forty seats i- in a facility, sometimes a walk-up windows, although I'm not sure that is completely appropriate here. Um, but, but, um, you know, at this time, we're trying to keep it pretty flexible, uh, rather than getting nailed down in a number of seats.
Oh, understood.
Just lastly, on the, on the parking, for, I mean, for now, it's gonna come back. Uh, you know, we have literature in front of us that says thirty-one, uh, parking spaces, right? Rather than the fifth grade, so thirty-one was the number.
Right.
I believe you, 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 you kind of, uh, ran the line of fifty percent, but.
It's tightly right. It, I mean, we'll, we'll need to tighten it up, but.
Because we have a couple of letters that were, and I think you might have seen them from, uh, our town engineer and our, um, public works director that just has a couple of comments in it.
I have, uh, I have not seen those, Mr. Anderson. Um, would, would you mind sharing, uh?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
But this is, uh, let me make sure that this is, yeah, New London Turnpike, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah. So this is from, uh, January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Um, he had, uh, following comments for the pre-application submitted by Garret Follin Associates for the new commercial building. One, the, the proposed New London Turnpike driveway, it appears the utility pole number one ninety, which is not shown on the plans, may conflict with the northern curb line. Uh, he said also there is an existing catch base in our New London Turnpike at the same location, which is not shown on the plans, that will be impacted by the proposed driveway. The, the existing catch base, it will need to be replaced, uh, with new four-flange frame grate. That was number one. Number two, it's, it's less worthy. Uh, the plan should indicate as the separation distance between the proposed driveway and the existing Dunkin' Donuts driveway on New London Turnpike. Number three is a guard, guard rail should be installed between the proposed retaining wall uh, and public roadways on Gay Street and Salvis Avenue. And number four from Kevin McGee was, uh, oh, I'm sorry, from, uh, uh, from, uh, Mr. Hagman was, uh, recommend the parking spaces variance. And this is why I brought it up, not to exceed, uh, fifty percent of the required amount, uh, I guess maybe not to be less than fifty percent of the required amount. So that, you know, when you said there was gonna be about fifty, I didn't want you walking that fine line, and I, we clarified you got thirty-one, uh, projected. So that was, uh, Mr. Cronin, that was Bruce Hagman's, and then the, uh, the other one was from, uh, Mr. McGee. His only comment of note was to be sure the sidewalks are replaced in front of the property with a handicap ramps and, uh, concrete curb locks at the next stage of approval utility plans. Uh, top, topographic elevations, um, traffic flow needs to be reviewed. That, those are the two letters that I have in my packet.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
Welcome back, Mr. Flynn.
I don't know what happened.
That's fine. Listen, so we just had, all, all you missed was a couple of comments. Uh, Mr. Cronin, I don't know, I, I saw the, uh, the applicant on the phone. It looked like, I don't know if he was trying to say something, he was muted, or if he was talking to somebody else in the room, but you're also, is it Mr. Chichatelli?
Chichatelli, thank you, sir. Yes, uh, I, I was trying, I was muted. Uh, the question, I believe, had to do with, uh, the, uh, proposed tenant. Um, I don't want to put any cards before horses, but it would be a, uh, a regional uh, well-known coffee chain, uh, that anchors, uh, the, uh, the project along with something on the order of a sandwich shop and then something like an AT&T or Verizon-type cellphone store. So all of these were intentional, one to anchor the project, then two to, uh, to see if we can mitigate some of the, the parking concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
I have comments. I was wait, I, our questions, actually, I was kind of waiting to see if anyone else had anything to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Cronin.
Um, a couple of things, uh, I'm not sure, this may be relief or you may be dealing with the town and it may not be relief, but I, I'm not sure that the Rhode Island DOT has jurisdiction over there. I don't believe Dunkin' Donuts or Cumberland Farms had to get a PAPA or Center in New England. New London Avenue, I do not believe is a state road, state-maintained or state-owned. I'm not sure about the ownership, but I know it's not state-maintained. So you might want to just double-check that with DOT?
Uh, absolutely, I'll check it.
Um, notwithstanding, though, the comments that were made by the town, I, I, I think were, um, you know, certainly reasonable things to look at as far as the distances between the driveways, the location of the catch base and sidewalks that are ADA compliant, so forth and so on. Um, in fact, we have a Crompton Meadows project further down, and, you know, again, there could be some pedestrian traffic that goes, you know, from Arnold Road down in, in front of all those to get into Center in New England, and there are a number of condominiums in there. So there, there's one. As far as the parking, this is just, I looked at the size of the three units, and I'm just throwing this out to you. Um, I mean, I'm sure the applicant knows his business, but you just indicated there could be a potential for, I don't remember, did you say forty seats plus the drive-up? Well, forty seats, that's, that's gotta be at least ten or fifteen parking spaces right o- out of the gate. That's half the parking spaces. And depending on what the other two businesses are and how fast the turnover is, you know, obviously dry cleaning is, the turnover is a lot quicker than a sandwich shop, and the sandwich shop is a lot quicker than a laundromat, so I'll, I'll leave that to you, but the and at least that I've, and I've talked to a number of commercial applicants that have come through some of my daytime job looking for land have indicated, they're typical one thousand to two thousand square foot commercial unit now. Uh, they used to need a lot of space inside and an X amount of parking spaces, and what they're finding is they're leasing out half the space and they need double the parking because nobody's keeping inventory. It comes in so quickly, notwithstanding the supply chain issues we're having right now. So he's basically taking two thousand square foot units and, and renting them for the price of a thousand square feet, when in fact, he, he would, because he doesn't have enough parking. And, and in fact, the demand is for smaller units and more parking. In other words, these strip stores. So here it is, now we're looking for a reduction, the required fifty spaces for these units, when it seems the industry's going the other direction. Where they, they would have smaller units in the building and double the parking that's required by the town. So, I don't know if you want to look at the size of those units and the size of the overall building in comparison to the parking and see if you can find the right balance, but um, I'll leave that up to the applicant to, you know, figure out who might be going in there, what their space requirements are, what their parking requirements are. But just remember, when they move out, we're stuck, and then, you know, you might end up with vacant space because there's not adequate parking. It just seemed like it was a little congested over there. The building seemed a little disproportionate to the number of parking spaces. And I, and I understand the anchor may have a requirement for X amount of parking to drive up in the amount of space they want inside the establishment as their typical, but the other two units, I don't know if there's any adjustments that can be made. In fact, specifically, the case that came up was it was actually a Verizon store. And that was the one that only, they needed less than a thousand square feet instead of the two thousand square feet that was in the lease, but they needed more. You know, they needed more parking. That's it.
If I, if I can add one more comment on, on to go along with that, the parking, um, I, I just thought of this. We, we're only looking at it from the, the perspective of, uh, customers and consumers. We haven't even talked about the employees yet. Where the, where the employees are gonna park. That, that must add, you know, five, six, seven, possibly even ten spaces. Employees probably coming into work by themselves, and that's one vehicle. So that's, that's another, um, something else to think about.
Per business, per business, if there's three businesses.
Do you know the hours of operation?
Uh, thank you for your comments and your question. To be, um, honest with you, I don't actually have that, uh, just yet. We're, we're still uh, pursuing LOIs, and again, I don't want to put cards before horses. Um, I will, um, it, this, this is generally daytime businesses, but if I could assuage, um, some concern by telling you that, uh, the anchor is going to be, uh, the, the majority of the business, like its neighbors, going to be drive-through uh, as opposed to sit-down restaurants. So these are not, for example, a sit-down restaurant, like, uh, I don't speculate, but something like a Greg's Restaurant type of thing. This is going to be a very quick uh, and largely, largely, uh, drive-through oriented. Um, I, I, I can let, uh, Mr. Hemingway of Garret Follin speak towards some expert opinion, but, um, I, I believe that we're in line with, uh, with issues elsewhere in this, in the town and, and neighboring towns.
Yeah, and, and if I can say, this, this is a pre-application. So, um, you know, I don't know how much we're gonna beat this thing up, but uh, if, if anybody else has any comments from the board, um, so you can get that warm, fuzzy feeling, I, I think anything that goes in that is gonna be an improvement. Um, as far as, I'm not sure if there's street parking on Gay Street directly behind there for employees, but, um, that, you know, street parking could be addressed also.
Yeah, yeah. My, my comments were, were for the benefit of them to do their own investigation, and I think, uh, the applicant was on the right track. Look around and see what the other similar type storefronts requiring. How are the parking lots? Are they at capacity, not at capacity? And then when these questions come up, you know, you'll have the answers as opposed to us speculating tonight. But my questions were meant as to provide you an opportunity to investigate them further before you come back.
Thank you. I know my daughter would love a Starbucks over there.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Flynn, I'd like to comment on something.
Sorry.
Okay, you have to, for, for Nick, something else to look at, um, as you move forward with this project is snow. Um, and storage of snow. So if we get a twelve or a sixteen-inch, uh, snowfall, um, it's gonna produce quite a bit of snow in that lot, and from my experience in public works, when you have businesses, where, where are you gonna stack the snow and store the snow in that lot? Um, so it's not out in the, uh, in the public way, because we've had problems in the past in Coventry with that along Prospect Street, which is behind Lake O'Reilly's and Autozone and the Cumberland Farms, where they push their snow out into the town road. And that's created some traffic issues. So something else to consider of Mr. Hemingway in your engineering is, is snow storage. When you get a storm like we're gonna get this weekend with twelve inches of snow, that produces some pretty significant snow that you have to store.
Yep, a- absolutely, but we'll certainly.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Smith. You know, I've seen businesses actually have to haul the snow away too, so that's always an option. Anybody else on the board?
Uh, what about signage? Is it gonna be a big sign, uh?
Nick, what's there now for a sign?
It's, uh,
I can see it. I can't really describe it.
I think you're asking about, is there gonna be a joint tenant sign? And to be honest with you, uh, Sam and I from, from Garret Follin have not really talked about that yet. There's gotta be something, but it would be commensurate with what's across the street and that. There's going to be something, but it would be commensurate with what's across the street next door and nothing. We're not asking for any special permissions on that.
All right.
Thank you.
I have one more question and nothing to do with the building. You mentioned the cemetery. Is that privately owned?
It is, I believe it's a state numbered cemetery.
I believe it is.
With the right of way towards New London Turnpike.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know if we'll need to address access any, any further as we secured it when we did the Dunkin' Donuts. There's, there's parking and access by deed from that property next door.
Anybody else? Have any questions? I'm, I'm hearing none. Well, I think the applicants heard a lot of opinions from the board. And like I did say, if anybody wants to go over there and look at it, we, we do not have any sidewalk scheduled during the Zoom situation with the state. So there's any, no more further questions for the applicant. I think, I think we can move to the next phase.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, like I did say at the beginning, the public hearing for Hopkins Hill Road is moved to a special meeting for this board on February ninth. And also the Willow Lakes will also be continued to February ninth.
Hopkins Hollow, Mr. Chairman.
Hopkins Hollow Estates. Thank you. And that brings us to public Cody, anybody for public comment?
Yes, there's one hand raised. I'll bring them in now.
Thank you. Mr. Restegian, can you hear me? Mr. Restegian? Can anybody hear me? Cause I'm having problems tonight.
I can hear you, Ron.
I can hear you fine, Ron.
My computer's having a mind of its own tonight. Mr. Restegian?
Arthur, can you hear us?
Because if you're talking, we can't hear you.
He doesn't appear to be muted.
He just went on mute and off mute, so he's doing something.
Mr. Restegian, if you click on the, the little arrow next to the microphone icon in Zoom, you can select the correct microphone. You might have the wrong one selected.
Anybody else, Cody, while, while we're trying to figure out Mr. Restegian?
No, he was the only hand raised. I'm sorry, there is someone else now. I can bring them in.
Okay. You're on mute. You're on mute.
How's that?
Name and address for the record, please.
Don Burger and Stacy Harrington, four ten Hopkins Hollow.
Yes.
Hi, Ron.
Hi.
We are here to voice our opinion about Hopkins Hollow Estates.
Yes, just so you're aware, we can't comment on that, that project, but we certainly can listen to your opinion on it. We, we, that has been continued to February ninth, so we really can't comment on that project.
Beginning, you said it was going to be postponed till February ninth.
Yes, it is. It's continued to February ninth.
Is it now the time to voice our opinion? Or can, should we wait till then?
Well, we can't, we certainly can't address any of your concerns. We can take them into consideration. But I think the proper time on that project would be February ninth.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
We just don't want that cluster along the road. If they want to build there, eventually, I guess it's eventually, it's inevitable, somebody's going to build, but do it on the five acre zoning that, that's why we have five acre zoning out here, because it's a rural community.
That would totally ruin the atmosphere and charm of our village. And that's just a few other things we had to say, but we will postpone everything.
I know Donna and Arthur are dying to get in there, so I hope they fix their microphones.
Like I said, we can't really comment on the project. But we certainly can, can take your concerns into consideration.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Cody, did you try to bring Mr. Restegian in? Any luck? Can you hear me, Cody?
Yes, he's in the meeting. We still can't hear him.
Is it possible just to have him call in?
He could try that, yeah. Mr. Restegian, if you want to just use your phone, you can call in on the number that's in the Zoom information on the agenda. If you want to try that.
Do you think he's aware that the meeting is continued to February ninth? He just can't voice his opinion?
He can't voice the opinion. We just can't comment on the project. Fairness to everyone. He certainly can voice his opinion if he wants. It is public comment.
We're just have the hand up again. I don't know, maybe they even know something about Mr. Restegian or they want to speak again.
Would you like me to bring him in, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Hello.
You're back.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't know why Mr. Restegian isn't responding, but my.
No, Donna just texted me and she wanted me to ask if it's open comment on the ninth. On February ninth, will it be an open comment?
That will be master plan and there will be a public hearing on that meeting.
Okay. Do you think it will be in person?
I, I can't answer that. You can call the governor's office if you want.
What's that?
You can call the governor's office if you want.
No, is this because of COVID, we're doing it this way?
Yes. But we, but this, but this board is, is, has decided to do a special meeting to try to get some of these applications. I mean, our planning staff is buried with applications. So this is why we decided to do another meeting.
Okay. All right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Two nine is going to be open comment.
Will be, will be a public hearing, yes.
All right. That's what, I think that's basically what Donna wanted to know tonight.
Yes.
We'll have to teach you how to use a computer.
Ma, she's been at these meetings before. She knows how.
I know. She's very computer savvy.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, for, for their benefit too.
Yeah.
The governor's executive order now expires on the fourth. On the fourth of February. So is it, unless he extends it, it will be in person.
Oh, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to leave. Thank you.
Cody, anybody else? Cause I think they just spoke for the Resterians, for Restegians.
There's no other hands raised.
Okay, I think we're done with public comment. Just so they know, they, there will be a public hearing on the ninth for the Hopkins Hollow Estate project. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor? I'll see us all on the ninth.